I would like to hear the rest of that story. Whoever's talking now.
Yeah.
I'm so thankful that I take that very seriously, even though it is.
Did you bring something for signature?
Yeah.
Do you have a sign up?
I have a sign yet.
Oh.
Have you signed it?
Uh-uh.
I just hope.
They probably must have thought I wasn't coming.
You're five minutes early.
Jason's here.
I was here. I was here. And what's crazy is the mayor and I were the first two out.
That is amazing.
I was the mayor myself.
You guys are all surprised.
Yeah. I was trying to.
Is that a good or bad?
I think the lights were all green.
Oh, I know.
No, my iPad, the password changed.
Thank you.
So thank you.
I hope everyone here can use that password. It goes by fast. Maybe. But it seems like some of those are the key.
Oh, I see.
You know, maybe, like, maybe for me, I think they need. Because there were a ton of stuff I hear. I wonder.
Yeah.
I don't know for sure.
Right.
You really want to make sure people know who you are.
Me?
Yeah. You got your nameplate.
I thought everybody was wearing their names.
Just wear a public.
What is this? This is public. This is a public.
Oh, you can wear whatever you want.
Yes.
Will you call and roll please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is to consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 16, 2018. Item B is approve the minutes of the special work study session held July 16, 2018. Item C is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held June 5, 2018. Item D is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held June 12, 2018. Item E, approve the reappointment of Gary Linnell to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term. Item F is approve the reappointment of Dana Moppet, Kent Graham, and Don Snider to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Item G is approve ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $484,509.05 and approved and ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019 in the amount of $4,155,856.74.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion. In a second, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number 90818.
I didn't say anything.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's fine. Consider. Consider adoption of resolution 90818 authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the city of Moore, Oklahoma for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of the city the question of authorizing the extension of an existing one-half of one cent sales tax and providing the use thereof containing other provisions there relating to thereto. Boy, that's big.
Mayor and council, this is a renewal of the half-cent sales tax that would be on the November ballot. The tax as it stands right now would expire at next March 31st. This is not an increase in this tax. It is a renewal of the existing tax. Items three and four are companion items. The only change we're making to this tax is the allocation of it. Currently, it is 80% for streets and drainage and 20% for public safety equipment. The proposed resolution before you tonight is 70% for streets and drainage, 20% for police equipment, and then 10% for police and fire and public safety operations. We feel like we can do this in part because the citizens approved proposition number two, which funds the drainage project over on Northwest 12th Street to Southwest 4th. And it will also allow us to remain competitive with the other cities in the metro area that have recently passed dedicated sales taxes for public safety.
Okay.
Excuse me, mayor. And then our council, Terry Hawkins, is here, just in case there's questions.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you. Do you have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider adoption of ordinance number 88818 of the city of Moore, Oklahoma, amending the city of Moore, Oklahoma sales tax ordinance number 60 as amended by ordinance number 33183, as amended by ordinance number 47088, as amended by ordinance number 55106, as amended by ordinance number 67710, as amended by ordinance number 780-14, to provide the renewing of leveling, or excuse me, of leveling, and assessing an existing one-half cent sales tax upon the grocery receipts or proceeds derived from all sales tax taxable under the sales tax law of Oklahoma fixing an effective date and the date of termination providing for the purpose of said additional sales tax, making provisions separable containing other provisions thereto.
Make your motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider appointing Jack Joyner to the Board of Adjustment to fill the expired term of Louis Williams.
Mayor and council, items number five and six on your agenda are companion items. Myself and three of the members of the council met a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, thank you, to interview candidates for the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment vacancies. In total, we interviewed approximately eight to nine individuals. We did feel, the board felt, that Jack Joyner was the appropriate candidate to fill the Board of Adjustment for the expired term of Louis Williams. Councilman Williams' term did expire this August, so if he approved, Jack Joyner would serve a three-year term. And Brandon Leib for the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Louis Williams. And that term for Mr. Leib would expire August of 2019. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would just make the comment that everyone we interviewed was exceptional, and I felt overwhelmed with how amazing the candidates were, so thank you for everybody that came out.
It was not an easy choice tonight.
Not at all.
Yeah. Motion to approve, number five.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. I appreciate everybody that filled out and applied to that, too. Okay. Any other? What's the noise?
We're having some audio and visual, video problems tonight, so they're trying to work on it.
What's the noise? All right, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item number six is consider appointing Brandon Leib to the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Louis Williams.
Motion to approve. Say it again.
Thank you, thank you both. We have any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider rezoning, application number RZ973, located in the northwest quarter of section 34, township 10 North, range 3 West, being south of southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue from R1 Single District, Single Family District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District, and approve ordinance number 86, or excuse me, 88618, application by Odom Northwest LLC David Odom. Planning Commission recommended the approval of this 8-0.
Mayor and council, this property consists of a vacant parcel of land of approximately three acres. It is located south of southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. This property is adjacent to an existing OG&E substation to the south and an existing drainage channel to the north. Although this site was included with the original rezoning for the Sanderah Lakes Edition in 2008 to R1, the preliminary plat did not include any residential lots on this property. The developer is now requesting to change the zoning of this parcel from R1 to C2 to accommodate future commercial neighborhood-related developments. Water and sewer are currently being extended to serve the site with the Sanderah Lakes Edition. There is no FEMA designated floodplain located on the site, and access is provided by South Santa Fe Avenue. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial. Land uses allowed in this designation include smaller-scale office, retail, and service uses. Due to the location and size of this site, commercial developments would be limited intensity. Therefore, it is compatible with the neighborhood land use category. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan. This site does further the pedestrian-oriented design through providing sidewalks on Santa Fe Avenue and limiting driveways that would be approved with a future plat. This application does meet the intent of the envisioned Moore 2040 Plan. An amendment is not required. And due to the growth trend in the area and based on the compliance with the comprehensive plan, staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did y'all address buffering? Since this is going to kind of be backwards, we tend to always fill commercial in or in the midst of neighborhoods. This one is going to be the opposite, so did y'all discuss the buffering?
Not at this time. The plat has not been submitted for our review. I think that what we would look at when the plat is submitted is something like a landscaping easement or similar to buffer the neighborhood.
Okay, all right. Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. Is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider the final plat of Sanderah Lakes, section three, located in the northwest quarter of section 34, township 10 North, range 3 West, being south of southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. Application by Odom Northwest LLC David Odom. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 8-0.
This final plat consists of 68 residential lots and two common areas on approximately 26.5 acres. That results in a density of 2.5 units per acre. A 100-year floodplain is located in the northern portion of the property within the common area B. Detention is required, and it is also located within that existing common area B. Access is proposed from South Santa Fe Avenue and Lago Drive as plotted in Sanderah Lakes Editions, sections one and two. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be urban residential. The plan does allow up to seven single-family units per acre in urban residential. The preliminary plat for Sanderah Lakes was approved prior to the adoption of this plan, and so the application was reviewed as to its general conformance with the intent of the plan for informational purposes only. The plan does place a large emphasis on quality, design, and appearance, and this addition proposes approximately 20% of the land area as open space and amenities. The plan also places a large emphasis on connecting residential and commercial developments with sidewalks or trail connections, and this proposed development is located within a quarter mile of the Oak Ridge Elementary School. This application does include a sidewalk along South Santa Fe to promote walkability to the school and nearby commercial developments. Sanderah Lakes Edition also has a large drainage channel to the north as a retention pond, and that does serve as an amenity to the development. Based on the compliance with the approved preliminary plat, staff recommends approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make your motion to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Item number nine is consider the final plat of Edgewater Edition, section two, located in the northeast quarter of section 30, township 10 North, range 2 West, being south of southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road. Application by R&amp;R Land Development LLC Rocky Clark. Planning Commission recommended approval 62.
Mayor and council, this property is located to the south of southeast 19th Street and west of South Sunny Lane Road. The property was rezoned to R1 in May of 2014. The applicant is now requesting a final plat for the second phase of the development. The final plat does consist of 65 single-family lots on approximately 33 acres. That is about two dwelling units per acre. The final plat includes 13 acres of common area, being mostly floodway and drainage areas. Public water and sewer will be extended to serve this site. Access is available from southeast 19th Street and through the existing residential streets as plotted in the Edgewater Edition, section one. This application does differ from the approved preliminary plat in that the lots have been reduced to accommodate the floodway as identified in the 2016 master drainage study that was completed by Mieschek and Associates. This study showed an increased floodway on this property, and that's associated with the two converging streams on the east and west side of the Edgewater Development. Although these identified floodways are not FEMA-regulated at this time, in other words, you could build something in that area, the city does expect that these floodways will be incorporated into FEMA's flood zone maps in the near future, in which case those houses, if destroyed, would not be able to be rebuilt. The developer has agreed to honor these floodways and eliminate the residential lots that would have been impacted by this. Due to the development's location at the convergence of the two streams, traditional stormwater detention above the 100-year floodplain is unlikely to produce the result that we would prefer to see at this location as detention ponds will be placed in the floodway and floodplain. However, the developer is currently working with the city's consulting engineer, Mieschek and Associates, to help ensure that the development's stormwater runoff will have no impact on the downstream properties. We have already met once with the developer's engineer, and we do believe that this can be accomplished through additional floodplain storage, which is just another method above and beyond detention that can be utilized to decrease the flooding downstream. The envisioned Moore 2040 Plan calls for this location to be open space residential. Land uses allowed in open space residential are homes developed on large lots, typically three quarters of an acre and larger. You can't have smaller lots if you have increased amenities and open space. Although the preliminary plat for Edgewater Edition was approved prior to the adoption of this plan, the application was reviewed as to its general conformance for informational purposes only. The plan does place a large emphasis on quality, design, and appearance for new subdivisions, and this application does include a common area of approximately 13 acres. The plan identifies the floodplain on the site as an opportunity for a priority greenway corridor, which is a corridor for a trail that would connect parks and schools throughout the community. A pedestrian easement along the limits of this floodway to accommodate this trail is being requested from the developer. Staff recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Elizabeth, you're confident that the homes that would be built are... You know, we've had a lot of flooding in the past, I don't know, five years down there. And you're confident that when they begin to build on, we'll be able to do the things that are necessary to make... Yes, you can never guarantee, but we'll take every step.
We will take every step, yes. In fact, we've already had one meeting with our engineer and the developer's engineer, and I think that they have come to an agreement as to how they will proceed in the engineering of this to get the result that we are expecting.
Okay, thanks. Have they taken into account a number greater than the number of floodplains?
We... I'm sorry, say that again.
So, everything we talk about is dealing with the 100-year floodplain.
Yes.
But we've had two or three events in the last five years that exceeded the 100-year floodplain. Has anything been taken into consideration here to go beyond the 100-year floodplain?
We believe that with the new floodplain maps, as Mieschek has developed them from 2016, will account for that flooding that we've seen. So, we believe that the original FEMA floodplain maps were in effect wrong or developed on outdated information, something like that.
As the engineers work together, will they have to come to some kind of agreement before they can move on to the next steps?
Yes. And ultimately, the city and our engineer are the ones who hold the approval pen and stamp, so we will make sure that the drainage calculations are going to work as much as we can.
So, can you enlighten us any on the six, where was the convention?
I believe that some of the Planning Commission members had some reservations about the flooding. This is in a very sensitive area where we've had a lot of flooding downstream and being sandwiched in between those two floodplanes, and then with the floodplanes morphing as they have with the 2016 drainage study, there was some feeling of uncertainty there. And I think that everyone recognized that we had a preliminary plat that was approved, but they wanted to be on the record as saying that they do have concerns.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Was that a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider adoption of resolution number 90518, changing the street name of East Ridge Place in the East Ridge Commercial Edition to Southeast 9th Street.
Mayor and council, this is primarily a housekeeping item. There is one business that is currently addressed off of this street. It's the Tick-Tock Clock Place. And every record that is out there in Cleveland County, the street sign, all of their billing information is from Southeast 9th Street. The only records that are incorrect are the city's building permit records and the plat. So, somewhere down the line, somebody decided to change their street name to 9th Street and failed to notify the city of that through official channels. Because there is just one property involved, and because they obviously have 9th Street as their address, we feel like it's just appropriate to go ahead and officially update our records so everything matches.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Stop that.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider adoption of resolution number 90618, changing the street name of South Janeway Avenue between southwest 10th Street and southwest 12th Street in the Bonnie Bray Edition blocks 16, 17, and 18 to Dreeson Drive.
This is the item that you considered last council meeting, and this resolution just makes it official that the street name is being changed. And just so you know, we did call a few people on the mail-out list that have their addresses currently from South Janeway, and they all knew of the meeting last week, and they just don't have a problem changing the name.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is consider approval.
I was just saying, thanks to loser.
Oh, okay. Item number 12 is consider approval of a contract with Pivot in the amount of $15,000 for operations of a community intervention center to receive and hold juveniles who have been taken into custody by law enforcement.
Mayor and council, the police department is asking for your approval to enter into this contract with the Pivot Crisis Center in Oklahoma City. The Crisis Center allows our officers, if they come in to contact the juveniles and they arrest them for a crime or a status offense, to be able to, if they can't...
this contract with the Pivot Crisis Center in Oklahoma City. The Crisis Center allows our officers, if they come in to contact the juveniles and arrest them for a crime or a status offense, to be able to, if they can't get a hold of a parent or responsible party, to take to the Crisis Center and release to the Crisis Center. And the Crisis Center has twenty-four hours to contact that parent. What this does for our officers, it allows them roughly be tied up for forty-five minutes to an hour, and then they can quickly return to the city and be back on the streets. If we did not have the Crisis Center, when we have a juvenile, we couldn't contact the parent, the officer would have to be able to sit for eight to twelve hours with the juvenile. This is similar to the contract we had with JIC and Norman, where we paid forty, fifty thousand dollars for. We have been using the Pivot Center for the last year as a pilot program, and we're very happy with the results.
Where is it?
It's 201 Northeast Fiftieth. It's the old Berry House.
Oh, okay. That is quite a savings. Do you know, do they... I know JIC provided intervention, so tried to appoint juveniles and families with some counseling or so forth. Does Pivot do any of that?
Yes, sir, exactly the same thing. They're entering contracts with more youth and family. They research and see if they can give the family counseling or any kind of help that they need.
Okay, great.
Most of your agencies in Oklahoma City, Dallas City, and Midwest City use this facility.
This is good savings, but are we still paying the county guys down at JIC?
No, sir.
Okay.
And we quit paying them in 2007, too, when we lost the services.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
So, who's second? Jason or Melissa?
I didn't.
I think Danielle and Jason.
Jason and Danielle. Danielle.
We have two seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is Consider Res... Excuse me. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Sorry about that. Item number fourteen is Consider Resolution Number 90718, adopting the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Ramp Program and budget for the October 2018, September 2019 program year, and authorize the mayor to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, capital planning, and resiliency.
Hi, I don't know if any of y'all know that I am now the grants manager of Cali Gilbert, so for those who don't know.
All right.
Mayor and Council, the city will receive a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars for the 2018 CDVG program year, and the city has held two public meetings with the CDVG Advisory Committee to gather public input. Sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars has been budgeted for the administration of the grant, with four thousand budgeted for Metro Fair Housing. Metro Fair Housing provides fair housing education and monitors all fair housing issues within the city. Forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars has been budgeted for public services. Those public services can be funded up to fifteen percent of the grant total according to grant regulations. Mills on Wheels will be funded through agent services, counseling services. For You will be funded through Moore Human Family in Bethesda, and Iran Utility Assistance Program will be funded through the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency. The remaining two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars has been budgeted for the North Norman and South Norman Waterline Replacement Infrastructure Projects. These projects will replace around fifty-five-hundred linear field water line. If you have any questions, if you have any answers.
Just point out to our council, and Louis Williams also sits on the CDVG committee, that part of the funding, the CDVG funding that we're able to use for some waterline replacement, and I know that those are some things that we talked about in the study session, so it's good that we're able to do some of that with these funds.
Yeah, these are some of the forty-five-plus-year-old water lines.
Okay. That's great. Would you make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Accepted.
Accepted.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number fifteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held July 16, 2018. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018, in the amount of nine-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-one dollars eighty-nine cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019, in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-forty-seven dollars sixty cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number sixteen is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held July 16, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019, in the amount of two-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-two dollars ninety-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, it's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number fifteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held July 16, 2018. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018, in the amount of nine-hundred-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-one dollars eighty-nine cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019, in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-forty-seven dollars sixty cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number sixteen is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held July 16, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019, in the amount of two-hundred-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-two dollars ninety-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, it's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number seventeen is new businesses. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. No one has signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B, items from the city council or trustees.
Just have one quick thing. Social media, what a great tool it is. I know I've been active doing it, but I did see some positive things, and I wanted to share it at council meeting with the other council members and those that are listening. It was from a citizen in our community, and they just said, "I wanted to give a shout-out for Moore Police Officer Nathan Wells. I was part of a very sad, stressful event today, but in the midst of one of the most darkest moments of my neighbor's life, Officer Wells gave us such a feeling of security and comfort. He showed such great compassion and kindness for my hurting neighbor. I hope his family sees this, because I want to thank them for sharing him with our community." He was true... He truly blessed us today, and I also wanted to thank the other officer that was there but wasn't able to get that officer's name. So, great job in the police department, and we do appreciate all the work that they do in our community.
Good job. Anybody else? Any items from the city manager?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Mayor and Council, the construction work on Howard Street continues, and we're close to the end on that. We should have the parts finished by the time school starts to not interfere with the school traffic. It may not be completely finished, but the school traffic should not be interrupted when it starts on the 16th. The groundbreaking for the 34th Street overpass is August the 15th, so, you know, it's almost here finally, but...
What time was that again?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
And then finally, just as an FYI, the station had over four-hundred thousand visitors last year, so it is a very popular and highly-used facility. Just wanted to make the council aware of that. That's all I've got.
Okay. Item number eighteen is Executive Session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma Statutes Remits the Public Body to Meet in Executive Session for Certain Specified Reasons Under Certain Specified Conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, consider approval of this year 2018-2019 contract between the City of Moore and the Attorney Order of Police, FOP Lodge Number 131, as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B-2. Item number B, or excuse me, item B, is discussed considering it deemed appropriate, take action to join pending litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and other potential defendants that are responsible for the opioid epidemic, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore, as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B-4. Do we have a motion to meet in executive session?
Make a motion. We can meet in executive session.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we are convened to executive session. Thank you for coming. We are convened the executive session. Thank you for coming.[205.98]
Would you call the rollback, please, to reconvene from executive section?
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you, okay, on item A, consider approval of fiscal year 2018-2019 contract between the City of Moore and the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP, Lodge Number 131, as authorized by Oklahoma Statutes 25B, 307B dash two. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. I'm Kerryce, thank you. Item B, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, take action to join pending litigation against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and other potential defendants that are responsible for the opioid epidemic and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B dash four.
Make a motion, no action at this time?
So. Item nineteen is adjourned. Oh, we got a vote.
Okay.
Sorry.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item nineteen is adjourned.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you for coming.
I got it, thank you so much.